Okay, this will be a meeting in the Hennessy Town Board of Trustees, December 8th, 2022. Roll call, please.
Richard.
Here.
Cliff.
Here.
Bert.
Here.
Harold.
Here.
David.
Here.
Barb, Hennessy United, do you have anything to add? I've probably been there since I was.
Leadership Hennessy, we've got one more class next week, and that's the class. And hopefully, both Shelley and Tiffany will be there to help the kids with the wrapping, because this year we've got 10 teams. And so we'll have 10 teams doing all the wrapping and everything. And we gave them their money last week. And so some of them had already started shopping. We gave them $150 so they can shop for their angel.
Good, great.
Where are we gonna do this at?
We're gonna, we're gonna do it in the seminar room next week.
Okay, because that's like 10 kids times about three to four gifts. It's like 30 to 40 gifts being wrapped at the same time.
And I've been saving mine too. I know, it's my fault that we have 10 because...
We may be in the hallway and all of that too.
Yeah, it was too, it was too much because with five kids, which is what I always had, was five kids in there. And trying to do an odd number so when they vote on something, they could disagree, just like you guys. And, you know, the majority would win. But I had to go back down to three because some of them didn't have cars or ways to get there to go do the shopping.
It'll be fun, it'll work out fine.
Marie helps a lot, and so does Jill.
You need more help, call Kim.
It's during the school day, isn't it?
Yes.
Yeah, Kim will be teaching.
Bring the kids over.
Yeah, four kids is what you need, right? Four kids, that's, yeah. That have never wrapped a present in their life, and it's actually kind of helpful.
All right, consider approval of the consent agenda. Minutes of the November meetings, approval of claims as follows. November purchase orders, 16,078,88. December purchase orders, 39,736,84. December restricted sales tax fund, 32,015,99. December library funds, $16.07. December street alley fund, 53,11. And the following reports, treasure, library, and police. Are there any additions or corrections to the consent agenda? I make a motion to accept the consent agenda. So, roll call, please.
Cliff.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
Richard.
Yes.
Bert.
Yes.
David.
Yes.
All right, citizens' comments. Town administrators' report, Tiffany.
Um, you have my report. I, I was doing it, and I forgot to change it to December. The only thing that's on here is the library building committee. I did not, I totally forgot about that meeting last week, and so I do not, this is from October, so I don't know what went down on that.
The, um, there were about 20 people that night, and the short story is, the general consensus was to, um, look into forming a historical society that would be responsible for raising money to do what they felt needed to happen to that building as far as, like a total gut remodel or whatever. The conversation was a little bit about maybe get, having the town deed the property to them, and they decided that the overall consensus was that the town should keep the building, but this should be sort of the fundraising group arm, if you would, to help, you know, take some of the load off the town to maintain the property. So, um, the other thing that they asked was, um, that we proposed to the, to the board, the 12,000 or 13,000 it was, to make as-drawn, uh, blueprints to get accurate pricing. But I, and I didn't, I'm not recommending that yet because I want to talk to a commercial contractor, not just someone local, someone that does that kind of work all the time. And one of them, for example, is the one that built the dome. And they're a little bit better at getting pretty accurate estimates without as-built drawings. At least get us in a, um, educated price rather than the napkin price we've been operating off of. So, that's, that's what's on the plate right now, is working to try to figure out realistically what would it take to get it where it needs to be.
Okay, sounds good. Okay, anything else?
I think I'll add two cents in. That, uh, I think having a historic association, society, these are fairly common across the country. I made a comment at that meeting, just pretend we're here not even discussing the library or the high school building.
There was a little bit of confusion. The people that were there were concerned the library was going away. And I started with, this has nothing to do with the actual library, this is all, all to do with the building. And it was mixed. Some didn't care about the building, some cared deeply about the building, and...
Can we change that? The way you were, can we change that, the way you were, you worded it, and all about Hennessy?
Yes, that was a mistake. That went out without me seeing it, and that, it didn't freak everybody out, but they, there were some there that...
It did some.
I got some too, and I said, I haven't seen it, so...
Yeah, it wasn't worded properly, and I apologize for that. But, um, moving forward, we'll make sure that that's worded properly moving forward. So, um, we know that's not Kim's ringtone now.
Good one. Are you done? Yeah, man?
Did you say young man?
Yeah.
Oh, boy, you made my day. Uh, these historic societies, they're fairly common, and I think something like that would be good for Hennessy.
Me too.
It, uh, we have a lot of history here, and I think the consensus is to preserve it. We don't know how to preserve it, but it gets people involved beyond the city limits, brings them into the picture, and even people living in South Carolina, Oregon.
Certainly. There's a difference between, uh, somebody made a comment in an earlier meeting that the Friends of the Library has trouble raising money to, to run the pumpkin patch. And I says, it's a different kind of fundraising. This is capital campaign fundraising. This is asking people to leave money in their will, um, life insurance policies. If you have no siblings or anyone, uh, deed your house. In fact, we actually had a gentleman stand up and said that he would do that. So, there's interest, it's just we don't know how much interest yet, so...
Good.
And actually, Tiffany, about the water plant?
What's that?
What's the deal on that?
Um, I forwarded you guys an email today.
I've already read that.
They've been still waiting, so when they ordered the parts, they ordered one of the wrong parts for the PLC. Um, and they're still waiting for that part to come in. But now they, after talking to the contractor, our engineer talked to the contractor, and he said that, um, they can use a used part for now until that part comes in to at least get it up and going.
Didn't they not order all the parts?
They did, but they ordered the wrong one.
Have they been paying payments on this thing for a year, probably?
No.
As long as we got?
And we haven't started yet because it's still under construction.
That's odd, huh?
Okay. Anything else? If not, we will move on to the other scheduled business. Discuss, approve, deny, recheck, and we'll take action on the following. Item A is discussion with possible action to approve resolution 2022 dash...
Can we strike this one? Because it's January that we're gonna have it.
Strike this?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. We will strike item A. Item B is discussion with possible action to approve agreement with Kingfisher County 911 to handle emergency service dispatch for the town of Hennessy.
So, you guys, Bert brought this to you last month, just as an informative. So, tonight, um, I've been talking with Ryan DeFarge, he's the 911 coordinator, to come and let's talk more, get more out on the table. What, you know, you guys have any questions with it? Is it something that we want to do? We still don't know, or we don't want to do it? We kind of need to come up with a, because there's a lot of scuttlebug, and so we need to either... Proceed or, yeah. Or, you know, say, this is not for us. So, that's, and this is, I mean, you feel free to ask Ryan.
Yeah, I'm here to throw dogs at it, so...
So, anything you guys have?
I'll go first, guard action.
Sure.
Six months ago, seven months ago, I brought this up. There's a lady here in the hall, just right now, there's another lady over there, and Bert. And she said that that wasn't a very good idea. So, what has changed in six months? That it's not a very good idea. I'm not for it, so...
Sure, I, I think there's probably an education period of allowing us to communicate and share concerns, probably both sides. I think we've all sat down and discussed and aired our grievances, so to speak, and, and shared the concerns of Hennessy. We, we really didn't have any concerns, but I think we've addressed most of those. If we haven't, please, let's try to get them on the table, but I think we have.
What about the radio?
What, what about the radio, sir?
Well, we couldn't talk to you before, and we couldn't, blah, blah, blah. You know, our officers couldn't communicate.
So, I believe you have VHF radios. So, as long as you have a VHF radio, the sheriff's department has already said that they would allow you to put the frequency back into your radios. And once the frequency goes into your radios, we can talk to you on that frequency. And we would prefer to be on that frequency so that when our dispatchers are listening, they're listening to one channel rather than the three or four. We, most of our law enforcement agencies are on one channel. Most of our fire departments are on one channel. We have multiple channels in there. And I, I, let me rephrase that. Kingfisher Fire Department and EMS is on a separate channel than most of the other county frequencies, the other volunteer fire departments. They utilize that frequency quite a bit, but we do recognize that they have another frequency that we, we monitor about four frequencies at all time.
Do you have Kingfisher Police Department?
Yes, sir.
The Kingfisher County and the town of Hennessy?
And Oakarchie, yes, sir.
And Oakarchie? Now, does Oakarchie do it half? I mean, part of theirs is Canadian County versus, I mean, that don't affect you guys at all?
No. I mean, the city of, the city of Oakarchie services the city of Oakarchie, which extends into Kingfisher, into Canadian County.
But what's the chance of getting cash? Ain't that kind of the same way?
That is, uh, but they are, they, I will make this comment. They have, their fire chief mentioned something to me about that. But they are, uh, we are perfectly able to, happy with them where they're at. I mean, we're, we're fine with that. We would, we would welcome them if they decided they wanted to come. We would at least talk about it, but we're, they're, we're happy that they're with Guthrie and everything, from my understanding, everything's good.
Because they have all of our calls already go to you guys?
Yes. We, we receive 100% of the 911 calls.
So, let me tell you, I had to call 911. I was at the dome, and a wrestler got hurt, so I had to call 911 to get an ambulance. So, I thought, well, my first chance to call 911, I'm gonna call 911. So, I called 911, I got Turk, and I said, and told him what it was. And then he's like, okay, let me transfer you to Life EMS to get the ambulance. So, I got transferred to Life, explained to Life what was going on, and then...
You repeated what was going, because you already told Turk.
Yes, I already told Turk, and then I had to tell Life. Then Life gets done with me and says, let me transfer you to Hennessy Fire Department. So, then I got transferred back to Hennessy and told it for the third time. That is how the fire department's getting calls on all of them.
Okay.
I figured that out, because they said, do you need fire? And I said, I told Tony, no, we don't need fire. We may need the officer to help, but we do not need the fire department. But that, I, after I went through that, I know that that is how the fire department is getting called because Life is automatically, no matter what it is, transferring them back to the fire.
And I need to speak with Ryan about that too, because 911, I think, is also notifying Hennessy to send fire on some of those. But, uh, but that won't change. You're still gonna transfer the caller to Life's dispatch.
You, you have contracted with Life, so we will, we're gonna take out your agency, your dispatch center, transferring it to Life. We're gonna transfer directly to Life.
Right. Which is what you're doing now?
Yes, that's correct.
So, that ain't gonna change?
That is correct.
Okay.
But then I wouldn't get transferred for the time?
Well, because, and this is something that we didn't discuss, but, and believe me, when I'm, when I'm making comments about 911, I'm going back a long time.
Sure.
But we had a situation where a gentleman was down, family was doing CPR, and they called 911, and 911 was trying to give pre-arrival instructions instead of just sending it to Life and getting them, because their dispatch thing would give pre-arrival instructions as well, so...
And our protocol now is...
But that's been alleviated. I mean, that's not an issue now. I don't want people to think that I'm saying it is, but you would still get transferred to Life Dispatch.
And that is your contract, but that's the only reason we do it. If you had an ambulance service here, we would dispatch your ambulance service here.
Right.
I'm not opposed to, I mean, I, we dispatch, I don't think they'll let us dispatch. I don't think Hen, uh, Life would allow us to directly dispatch their local unit.
I would, I would not, I would not want them to.
Okay, yeah, I said, I don't think they would allow us.
Yeah, because, uh, their dispatchers, like I said, will give pre-arrival instructions such as that. You mentioned the frequencies. Our fire department, like Kingfisher, has a standalone frequency. Will that be an issue?
Yeah, no, I mean, we just plug it in their radio.
I, I have a question on the radios. I understood that the Motorola that Kingfisher uses and the Kenwood that Hennessy uses don't talk together. They're different, completely different types of digital radios.
There is different systems. There is a system called NXD.
Right.
That is a proprietary system that Kenwood has. But that has nothing to do with, that is a proprietary, um, NXD is a proprietary, I'm trying to think the right word, and I apologize, but it has, it will not affect. The NXD has different, you can do VHF, I think you can do P25, and you can actually do NXD on that radio, depending upon the model. I, I don't know what model you have. But just a regular Kenwood radio, which you have, will work just fine.
Okay. Just, it's the VHF, it's, it's the variable, okay?
It's VHF digital.
Got it, okay.
There is, there is, we cannot talk to Life on the radio because I believe they are the ones who actually, that's the reason you have that radio, probably, is I believe Life has the NXD system, which is a, I believe, if I'm gonna say this rightly, it's kind of like a network throughout their radios. They can talk.
Trunkings.
Thank you, that's what I'm trying to say. That, that was the word. It's a, it's a proprietary, in so many words, I believe that is correct.
Okay.
But your radios will talk to us just fine while we have to just put the right frequencies in. We, we talk to Bert on the fire channels, I mean, we've talked to him on the fire, but we, emergency management talks to Bert. We, we talk just fine, so it will work, it just has to be programmed.
Okay.
What is it, coffee?
The way we propose this, um, is I prepared a budget. And our shortfall, so the county currently has a sales tax, a half-cent sales tax that is split out amongst different agencies. We, 911 gets a portion of that half-cent sales tax. And I don't have that exact number with me, and I apologize. But, so we have our 911 fees, the 911 fees that come in, which is 15% of the base telephone line plus 75 cents for every cell phone that's used in the county. And those are called PSAP dollars. They come into what we call our PSAP. Those dollars is set aside as 911 dollars. That was not enough to support our 911 center. So, several years ago, we, the county voted a half-cent sales tax. And through that half-cent sales tax, I believe, there were several things in there. I even believe the Hennessy Library gets a piece of this half-cent sales tax, if I'm correct. So, not all of the half-cent sales tax comes to 911. It's multiple agencies and fire departments, and I think Bert, you guys probably, I mean, you get a piece of that. So, with that sales tax dollars, the PSAP dollars, we have a current budget shortfall, projected shortfall of about $300,000. So, what I did was, when we started this process, is I Googled the population of Kingfisher County, and it was around 15,000. So, I took the population of Hennessy, Kansas, City of Kingfisher, Oakarchie, and I subtracted out all the city population and left the Kingfisher County number. And then I said, okay, what's the percentage of those populations based upon the total population? And I came up with Kingfisher County as 47%, City of Kingfisher at 32%, City of Hennessy at 14%, and 7% for Oakarchie. So, out of that 300,000, and we're actually gonna have a larger number, but for this purpose is, I'm just gonna say 300,000, because that was the dollar I said, they didn't want to change it after we did everything. So, your portion would be right at $3,449.55.
Am I?
Yes, sir. That's a total of $41,000 a year. Now, the proposal that we're working on, which I should be able to email you a hard copy tomorrow or Monday, we're still working through everything, making sure it gets looked at to send you a draft copy. And I'm sorry I didn't have that tonight, I'm just right out of time. It's gonna be a one-year agreement.
So, we, what, what do we pay right now? Our, with dispatches and people?
Well, now, this doesn't, this is just salary and benefits total for dispatchers. We pay 100, close to $162,000 a year.
And I can tell you that equipment costs, just for us, right now, we're in the process of updating our, a refresh on our whole 911 system. And we're gonna be looking somewhere between $3,000 and $4,000,000, just for the equipment. Now, that has a five-year, five-to-seven-year, five-to-ten-year lifespan, but as technology changes, there's a lot of new things that these old things do, and this thing. So, if I have an accident, I can actually pull in my heart rate on our new screen. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, but I was trying to...
No, 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 you're fine, you're fine, no, no, no.
But like the sales tax you're talking about, ain't that subject to change like every single year?
Yes, sir, and that, I, I don't know about, that, that sales tax, I don't know the timeframe.
It has a sunset. I think the half-cent is a 10? It may be a 5. It's a 5. It's a 5.
Yeah.
Yeah, the half-cent tax has a 5. And every five years, the county commissioners can reallocate to different departments.
And so what, our percentages probably would not change. The dollar amounts may change, but our percentage of allocation of that shortfall, because we're always going to throw that in, and I mean, I'm more than happy to share our budget. I mean, I don't, it's no secret, it's all public information, so...
Well, and, and I think, a lot of people think this is all about money, but it's not. I think it's more towards getting, um, I want the best service, the quickest service for, for our people, and trying to, you know, make that the best we can. To me, that's the bigger issue than, than the money.
My bet is, if we've been asking our kids for 37 years to call 911, you know, I've never told my kid to call 405-853-4444. And as I get older, and I, like, uh, I've had some problems, and I can't remember 405-853-4444 if I'm laying on the ground. You know, my wife comes running in there, she gonna call 911, you know?
And part of that, that technology piece that goes back to quality of, quality of product that we're delivering, I mean, they literally can look at my heart rate that comes in on a screen through the technology that's out there that we will have. And I can pass that directly in, or our team can pass that directly on to Life, say, hey, they got their blood pressure is this, their, their heart rate's this going on. I mean, these things have changed the way even we dispatch.
Yeah, my three-year-old called 911, man, about three times a day.
I know, like, my phone will ask you for your health information, and that's some of the stuff that will go over.
We will pull that stuff directly in, and that's not just, I mean, it's, we, we will, we receive information, we will be able to receive information, everything from GM's product on their, uh, I can't believe I just forgot what it's called, OnStar, OnStar information. All that stuff will come directly to us and pop up on a screen. So, we, we're gonna have that technology that, quite frankly, I don't know that the town of Tennessee would have, that we could bring to the table to do that with.
So, what can we do to our employees?
Well, I mean, that's something that we've got to discuss. I mean, we would need one, for sure, to do record-keeping for the police department, so, you know. And then I talked to Ryan to see if they needed any with this.
And we're willing to interview folks.
Yeah. And then, um, if we decide to do that, I really think that they would at least need some type of severance.
Question. So, if I dialed 911 now and you had the correct equipment, you would still be able to get my heart rate? It wouldn't have to go through?
No, we do not have that right now.
Oh, you don't have it now, but if you did?
We, we would.
And we didn't have your service, if I dialed 911, would it still give me that? No.
No, because we...
This is the added, okay.
So, part of this, the other side of this is, which you all, I don't believe have used, but in the past, we have allowed, and I'm kind of getting off subject here, but we're in the process through our 911 system and updating our maps and updating this whole new technology. We are looking at all of the addressing throughout the county. We have engaged with a contract company that is out looking at those addresses, and I think there's like, I don't, I don't know the exact, I don't want to spill a number here because I know the paper's here, so I don't want to give the exact numbers. There is, there's quite a few discrepancies, and so part of our job is to fix those so that when we do report, we're doing that. The other side of that is, any new housing addition that goes in, or new construction, that we're, we're gonna come out, and we're going to ask that you allow us to do that addressing because we need to make sure that it is correct going forward so that the 911 can. When Bert's trucks leave, we need to be able to make sure Bert's headed in the right direction. And that is a service that you're not getting right now. So, we're bringing that back in and saying, hey, we're taking control of that. We're going, I don't want to use the word control, but we're gonna administer that to make sure that we're getting the right information in.
I got, I got a heart monitor, and it's hooked up to the local heart hospital. And my numbers go circling, they call 911, you know? And they dispatch whoever they want.
Right.
You know, that's one of my, you know?
So, we would, we would need to find out what Bert's choices are and the town's choices on dispatching. We have protocols and things are set up. If, if XYZ happens, this is our protocol to call. Through that process, we're also gonna be handling, if this, you all decide to do that, we would also be handling your administrative calls throughout the day, I believe. So, there's gonna be other calls that we're gonna be dealing with besides the 911 stuff.
My hearing is poor, so you may answer this question already, so I'm gonna re-ask it. Who in the county is on the dispatch system? Bert, Cassin, and Dover, and various fire departments in the county?
Cassin is not on the system. They are with Guthrie. Since they're split on the county line, they've chosen to go to Guthrie.
But they're working through a county system rather than having their own?
No.
Yes, they work...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, you're correct.
Yes.
They, they work with the county, uh, Lincoln County.
Logan.
Logan, sorry, 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 Logan County, yes, they work with Logan County.
Who's little neighbor's fire department?
With us. We, we have all of the county fire departments.
And I wanna circle back to your question on why now, you know, that you brought it up six months ago. But if you remember coming into my office, I have never erased...
Well, I know.
...that dispatch, because...
I didn't mention you. I mentioned two ladies down in the audience, Chief right there, Fire Chief.
But I wanna tell you that, and I, this came up because Ryan called me. You know, nine-one-one has been going through some coordinators and different things, and Ryan called me. And so we, that's how it really started taking off.
We feel like we can deliver a very high-end quality product. I would like to say that you'll, we will have an McDonald's experience every time you go through there. That is our goal, is to be able to repeatedly give you the same product time and time after that. And we're working very hard. Now, I will say that you have four of your citizens in that dispatch center. And so you are heavily influenced in the outlook of, I guess, the benefit of having four of your citizens and residents here in that dispatch center. You're probably heavily, you're probably gonna have some preferential treatment, just because they already know who you are, if that makes sense.
I mean, me and Bert, we've had some open discussions at this, you know, so we, we are fine. You know, Dave's concern was officer safety, going through nine-one-one dispatches.
Making sure the radios.
You know, Aaron, he got right on Bert's sidekick, and he hasn't told me, he hasn't told me why he wants to go yet, you know?
Didn't we talk about it in the last meeting?
Yeah. You know, but what's the advantage? You know, what, what Bert says, in your opinion?
I mean, the advantage is basically the same. I wouldn't say I was completely against it the last time we talked about it. It was just, I had a lot of questions that we had...
But you looked at Bert, and you wanted to say something. I mean, I wanna know what the police department said about it.
What about, what about the other officers?
He's worried about his employees. And to me, that's the thing that we've got to...
See, here's, here's the difference, here's the difference between Bert and I. I mean, I'm not saying Bert, they're his employees too, but he isn't working there every single day like I do. So I had a, I have a different relationship with all of them than he does. So I was, I was concerned about that, and the radio's working, because prior to the, first time you brought that up six months ago, this has never really been discussed, as far as I, I mean, when, when I was here. So I didn't know a lot of those answers at the time, but since then, I've talked, I've talked to Ryan, and I would sit down at dispatch for four or five hours one day, then I'd talk to him for another hour.
Yeah.
You know, the thing I haven't really heard is, you know, the, about the police officer safety, going through nine-one-one like it was the last time, you know? That's what I wanna know.
I think that's my answer. The safety issue isn't right.
I haven't heard from you guys, but I haven't heard from the ladies that, that were worried about it, you know, that their husbands or sons were the, out in force.
Oh.
Selling them.
Selling. Do you wanna speak?
You asked for it, remember that.
I, I, man, I'm all for it. I mean, she's pretty concerned.
She is still concerned, and I will tell you that, because we have talked about it.
I am concerned. I mean, because I, one end, I have my husband, who's on the police force, and when he's out and about, I wanna make sure he has the best dispatch. And then on the other end, I have my daughter, who's a nine-one-one dispatcher. So, I mean...
I mean, I, as a town councilman, I wanna provide the safest and quickest response to any of our citizens.
Honestly, my biggest concern would be, do you have enough dispatchers on every shift to cover more than one or two calls at a time, if they come in? That's probably my, my main concern.
Our, 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 our team is actually trained to handle multiple calls at one time. Your daughter could probably handle up to about four calls at one time.
True. She has a wonderful mother.
Bert can handle probably four calls at a time as well. Dacey's learning, Lark is learning. Lark, Lark is doing a great job. She's, she's right in there. But once they're in the seat and they're doing it full strength, they're gonna be able to handle four to five calls at a time. I mean, that's, dispatch can handle up to six, well, actually can handle up as many as you can run in there. I'm always, I shouldn't say I'm always there, but when I am there, if there's a problem, I'm answering phones too. That's not my typical deal, but I'm monitoring the radio. They don't really want me on the radio. But I think officer safety-wise, and this is coming from your daughter's mouth, there is nothing that goes on in Hennessy that they can't handle and would not have handled better than what's going on currently. And that's coming from her mouth.
That don't surprise me. But my, but my concern as the overall is, do you have...
Yes.
Enough at every shift?
Yes, yes. I feel very comfortable that we can handle. Now, I will say this, I'm also open-minded enough that we need to evaluate that. We probably need to evaluate it as we go along and look at it. But right now, I'm gonna tell you from the folks that live in this town, that has to see you all on a regular basis, says it's no problem. And that's what I gotta go for. I have to listen to them.
You, Harold, you asked what changed, and I wanna put out there what has caused me to take a second look at it. And that is the county appointing Ryan as director, because I feel very confident in Ryan. I feel very confident that if we have a problem, Aaron, myself, whomever could pick up the phone, this is what's going on, would you check into it for us? And I'm very confident that will happen. I, I feel like nine-one-one is a critical enough entity within our county that it needs its own full-time director, which is what you're doing. And I'm, just to be quite honest, that's what's, that's pretty much what's changed here.
Here's what I'll say, Bert. Bert, you have a lot of respect in town, especially the older people, even some of the younger people respect you. And I might be centrist on the, and when you kinda dogged it the last time, you know, to a certain extent, you know, it kinda got, put the black, kinda the black mark on it. You know what I'm saying? Now, you know, six months down the road, you know, we're trying to say it's better, which, you know, I did my homework for the first time, you know? I've talked to Tiffany, I, I, you know, and I did my homework on it. You know, I, I'm ready right now that I'll make a motion to, to just go to the next step, you know? You know, we need it, you know? I think it would be better for us, you know?
Question. Is there any way we can have a trial? Cause I, no, okay. Cause I think that's a concern of people not having anyone on site at night.
But the thing that is...
At two o'clock, you know, when you look at the police reports, and I do look at the police reports all the time, it's like, nothing good happens after midnight, the kids say, their parents tell them, and that's true. And so I worry for the safety of our officers.
But we've had it, we've had a trial run for, how many years since nine-one-one?
Not totally without having an officer there, I mean, anyone at the station.
And you, when you dial nine-one-one...
And my question also is, so will we be able to hold prisoners in there, since we won't have anyone in there twenty-four seven?
We only have...
We should have, we should have never done that.
We've only held two people in the past year. So it's really not...
It's like first multiple times.
Yeah. So really, it hasn't been you.
I know, but are they held for, we can't even hold them, put them in there if somebody's...
No, because you wouldn't have a, a jail.
I, I know, but I mean, even, okay, not even during the daytime, you couldn't...
You wanna sit there with them all day? I don't.
I don't know, but I thought you were gonna have somebody there.
No, during the day, I mean, but so, it almost wouldn't be worth the time or money to put them there just for, during the day, 'cause I mean, you have to cut loose at the end of the day, right? So you have to arrest them first day in the morning and cut them loose at, at night.
But I thought that's what they were saying, they were gonna have somebody there, because somebody has to do the crime.
Somebody would be there in the day.
Honestly, honestly, you, you wanna tell you honestly, we should never put that jail in there. We, town of Hennessy's spending a lot of money that it never panned out.
Well, I'm just...
I mean, I'm just...
Well, we were, okay, so there was a lot more, I would say, arrestable offenses back in the day. Now they don't hardly arrest anybody, so...
Well, the whole...
VIs, we don't...
Yeah, the state completely changed.
You gotta arrest everybody for marijuana, anyone.
Yeah. All the drug laws changed. Now everything's a misdemeanor.
Yeah.
So it's all ran through city and...
Yeah. I, I would like to answer another question from your county line. You asked why, or you asked if there could be a trial period. I feel that that would be a total liability issue because of confusion. I think they wouldn't know who to call, when or where, or what they were expecting. And I think the town of Hennessy and...
We already have that, though. People are already calling nine-one-one, and I would be calling four four four. I mean, you know...
Well, even if you called four four four, you would still get that.
Yeah, we're, it's gonna be four of them too.
Right, no, I get that. I understand that.
No, I see what she's saying, because like you said, when you were at the wrestling thing, you called nine-one-one. I'm from Hennessy, and I know we have it here in town, I'm calling four 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 four.
Yeah.
So why did you go ahead and call nine-one-one instead of calling the Hennessy Police Department?
Trying me out.
I did!
She's trying me out.
But what would most people do? Because I knew that nine-one-one was gonna have, whoever I talked to was gonna have to transfer me to life, right? The part that I didn't realize was life was gonna transfer me back to Hennessy PD.
I didn't know they ever did.
I, I guess, I mean, so we're not, we don't only, only serve the people that live in this town, we serve other people that come in. For instance, this kid that probably happened to, probably doesn't live here.
No.
His parents were, his or her parents were to call the, they're gonna call them nine-one-one.
Nine-one-one. So, and believe me, the fire department goes to elementary school every year, it puts on a program. And I have a kid come up out of the audience, and I dial it so it doesn't hit them, but have our dispatch answer at nine-one-one, because we tell those kids to dial nine-one-one. That's what we're telling them. And that's what we want them to do, is dial nine-one-one. My concern's not people dialing nine-one-one and getting the correct responses as much. And, and this kinda goes back to the trial thing. I, I understand what you're saying on that. Before we would make a decision, I would like to see our radio frequencies put into your radio, or yours put into ours, however that needs to work.
Isn't that a big cost?
No, it shouldn't be. And I, I just, because here's what I'm getting at, Ryan, if there needs to be a repeater between here and there, so that if these guys are out on a domestic and pick up their microphone and say, I need backup now, I'm not worried that your people know where they're at, because they can pinpoint them immediately.
And we can too.
But I wanna know that they can hit your radio and...
No, I, I understand that, and I respect that. I, I, I get that.
Because we may need to put in a repeater somewhere to make this work better before we just jump in. Does that make sense to you guys?
I, I have a comment that I've observed numerous times, and I'm gonna relate it to Garfield County and Enid PD, their dispatchers in the same room. And what I hear here a lot, and I heard it the other night with the mess out at the pot farm, is, I don't know, that's county's deal. Or, I'm not sure county's doing that. Where an officer will call in and need to know something, and because there's no direct communication with county other than picking up the phone, they don't have that answer that fast. And Enid, the, the police dispatcher turns around and talks to the county dispatcher, and they have their answer immediately. So, you know, I'm not saying I'm for it or against it, I'm saying a single source of that information, I think, would be valuable.
I know our deputies are here in town, and we talk to them. I mean, they're, they're in town, and we, we talk. Is the radio shortages in areas? Probably. But it's a radio. So I would also say that, I mean, the only way we're really gonna know is to have a heat wave done on radio to see how far. But, I mean, our deputies are up here, and we dispatch radios, and we have them come and assist on radios.
Well, we've got the county's sheriff's frequency in our fire radios, and I assume you all do too, if you know it.
I don't, that's since they updated it.
Uh, we may not...
Yeah, you don't have to do that for...
Yeah, you probably haven't had it since we've updated to the digital side. But it's on the same tower. So if you were talking to the sheriff's department, so here's the deal. I don't know, when you call in on your, you talk to King, through Kingfisher, or you talk through your radio system?
Well...
When you talk to a dispatch?
On the radio.
Well, we talk to our own dispatch now, here. So I don't call in to Kingfisher, 'cause I was gonna say we could try that, but not if...
I, my radio's right out there. We can go talk right now and see. But I mean, we, we're not experiencing radio issues inside of Hennessy like you might think, because our, we're already talking to our deputies up here.
And we've got a repeater on the water tower, and I'm wondering if that repeater could be reconfigured to...
Sure. I, I, I think there's, there's logistical sides of this that I think that we can definitely...
I just don't, you see what I'm saying? I don't wanna jump in until we've tested and made sure that we...
I, I would encourage, I, I would encourage Aaron to get that frequency put in his radio, and then drive around town and kick the repeater. Or, we can jump in my truck and drive around town and kick the repeater, talk to dispatch. I mean, we can do that, see.
God, if we need to go on to the next step.
I just, I'm sorry, I, I have another, I have another concern. We have a very large Hispanic community. And I realize that that is difficult for them to communicate with us, and sometimes they go directly to the police department. And sometimes you have to call somebody here in town who can, who can speak Spanish, and they can understand. Is that correct?
Uh, not necessarily. I can usually communicate pretty well. I can't speak very well, so I don't know, I don't, I don't know who's, is able to communicate with people Spanish or not.
Yeah, which officers are on...
I can, I can address that.
Okay, good.
We just had an instance, I believe, that you all are aware of, that we were talking in Mandarin, or Cantonese, excuse me. And so we have access to folks that, if we cannot communicate directly, we have access to all languages on a, on a instant.
And most iPhones have the, the translator.
Is that like a Google thing, or whatever?
No, no, this is actually a human being on the other line.
Oh, wow, okay.
I mean, we, we actually had to use that service just here recently.
And how did it work?
Can I ask your daughter? She's the one that called. It worked great. I mean...
No, I, I know what she said. She told me it worked great, but I wanted you to...
Yeah, it, it worked great. I mean, 'cause we were, we were a little panicky. Turk was, Turk took the call, and then Ryan's like, the log, call log. So, I mean, she got on there, and it worked great. I mean, it worked great.
So when you asked my opinion, not only when I, like when I said I'm worried about the police officer side, I worry about the dispatch side too. That's why I asked you, is there enough? Cause not only is our officer safe, our dispatchers go through the same stuff the officers go through.
Sure, you bet.
So that's why I'm like, do you have enough? Because one, one person can only handle so much stress.
That's, that's correct. And I think I would be remiss in saying that, you know, once we get started, and we get going, and we start taking calls, that we need to observe that. I mean, I would be admissed to say that we're not looking at it. I think we need to look at that, but until we're in that situation, put into that situation, we, until we can test that limit, we're not gonna know. And quite frankly, I, I personally believe that our dispatchers that are there right now, and coming, even coming from them, they, they believe, because most of them have worked here before they worked there. So they already are used to the call log, they already know what the call log's like, they know what kinda calls are coming in here. So they believe that they can handle it without any problem.
And I, I'm...
And only because they worked here, and they already knew what comes in here.
And the night of the incident you're talking about, I was involved in that with the fire department, you all did an amazing job. I don't know, that, that had to be extremely stressful, physically and emotionally, and it was, I never saw it go.
Yeah, it was Turk and Ryan, totally. Those two were air traffic control, and let me tell you, they, I had the privilege of listening to the recordings before I released them to Channel Nine. And I was very proud. And you all as town folks need to be proud, because your two dispatchers that were from here handled that situation like a champ. They handled it like a champ. They handled it like a champ. They handled it like a champ.
What we need to do, as far as the council, what do we need to go forward?
Well, I think we need to...
From my end, I mean, I will do whatever you all want to do, but I'm going to present you a rough cap, rough draft agreement. And just so you're not surprised, there is a, I think there's a 90-day out agreement. It's like, for example, if you wanted to break the contract, there's a 90-day deal. There's something in there that says it's a one-year term with that, with a automatic renewal unless you've given notice so many days prior to the one-year renewal date. So, I mean, it's pretty simple. There's nothing fancy about it. It's just pretty simple language. But I'll get that to you, so you can read that. I'm just not completely...
Well, if he gets that, and we have it...
And maybe in the meantime, we can try talking back and forth, and...
I think with some of the stuff, and I may be putting words in your mouth, but with some of the stuff that he's doing right now, time is of essence.
I think it would be for one, because...
Because he's redoing some...
We're redoing a lot of things, and time is of essence, or some of our stuff that we're applying for. January 1 would have been a great day to go live. That would have been my hopes. I would have encouraged the council to do this. January 1 would be my wish. All he has to do is start talking. And we would take his GO and put it on there. All he has to do is give us access to that side of it, and we'll be able to populate that. And we can start talking as soon as he starts talking to us. We can start talking back. As simple as that.
Well, the reason I ask if it's doable, I think it would be doable on our end to get the attorney to the con, the contract to the attorney, and get it looked at, approved. We could have a special meeting and adopt that. I don't think, yeah, I don't think...
Here's the deal. We're not, we're not looking to send you an invoice on January 1. That's not the intent of this. But knowing that we have that coming, that is where we're, that's where we need to report that stuff, because we actually, or you know the PSAP outline stuff? I have to turn that back in. And if we're going to be doing that, I need to turn that in, in our report to the state. That's, that's the big issue for this.
I gotta ask you a question, you know, on our side, that I'm sure the dispatchers are looking at right now. What if they come in tomorrow and say, "How do you..."
What happens to us?
What happens to us?
We're gonna call you and have you...
Here's the deal. If they walk in tomorrow morning and they all resign instantly, I would just ask Aaron, "Give me a call," and we'll start that call.
You gotta think about it. You got four or five people thinking that.
But if, I will tell you, I don't think it would be in their best interest to do that, because if they quit, then they can't draw an appointment. Or if they're not here, then they would not be able to get any severance or anything like that, that you guys, that I would recommend that you guys give them. So, I mean, to me, I don't think that they would do that.
If I got a job offer, I'd be thinking about it, you know, I'm out the door.
Well, far as you, your department being covered tomorrow morning, or at 2 o'clock tonight, I imagine he has your fire frequency, and I'm sure we have your fire frequency in our system. I would just have to call down there and ask, but I'm sure we do. They literally could talk to us on your fire frequency right now. I mean, that, I mean, that's how simple it's...
I can get a radio tribe. Go on, set the core.
That's how simple it really is. I don't know who you all use for your radio work.
Bill Nolan.
RN. Yeah, RN.
Reso.
Out of Enid, or?
Yeah.
So, I mean, what, I mean... So, reports and things like that, we will be able to just email. Aaron would just, we can give you reports by type of incident. We can send that to Aaron. We can bring it, or we can send it for meetings, you know. We have all that information. You can start...
And I assume on, on the fire side, as soon as we return from a call back to the station, we call our dispatch and get...
Run number?
We get a run number. We get a time of, a call time and arrival time, and I assume we could do that following every call.
Yeah, they will actually be able to provide you. That call number that's on GO will be your actual call log number. That spools out of our CAD system into there.
So your numbers won't go 1-2-3-4-5-6 anymore?
Okay.
It'll just be whatever it is. I'm just gonna look here and see what... If there's any calls.
Well, we could use that as a dispatch number and still use a record numbers.
That's what we're gonna have to do. That's what we have to do.
Because like our, our numbers, like right now, 2022-dash-whatever-call we're on, which is about 260 to 70.
Do you use credit, credit con?
No.
E-Dispatch?
E-Dispatch?
We did use credit con, but we switched. Do you all have E-Dispatch?
We don't, right now. May I walk up here? I just want to show you the incident number. So this would be just the incident number, closing incidents. That would be the incident number.
Actually, I have those on my phone.
Yeah, I forget. Yeah, you have them on your phone.
Okay. Well, Harold, to answer your question, what do we do to order? I think if Ryan's got a draft copy of a contract, we take that, we send it to our attorney, get his input on it, see if he wants to add, or strike, or whatever, back and forth, and...
Do we make a motion to go forward, or what?
I'll second that motion.
I don't know if we need a motion. We're gonna have to meet and vote to approve it once the attorney...
Maybe you do do a motion to proceed to get the agreement and send it to the attorney, and then meet once the attorney's done with it. That way, it's not up in the air on what the vote is with the town board. Does that?
Sure.
And I will tell you, Ryan is on the city council for Kingfisher, so he knows about how a lot of this stuff works, so...
Yep.
You wanna move? We're gonna have some opening.
If you can buy steak Friday nights, Bert, we might, we might talk.
He could do it. I don't like him, but he could do it. A little rough, right? To make a motion to, to accept the agreement.
To proceed.
To proceed. With the agreement with Kingfisher County, 911, to handle our emergency service approval with our lawyer, Dan Weller.
Okay.
Anything else?
And I second it.
Okay, roll call?
Harold?
Yes.
Cliff?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
So this is 24/7, too, right?
Does that mean midnight?
They would answer all...
I just gotta, I just gotta poke borrow, man. Just gotta poke her a little bit.
That would, well, no, because you had one time that talks about having someone in there during the day.
Well, that person would still be there, but that's a record keeper versus...
They won't be answering calls.
Yeah, we will be servicing 24/7.
Okay. Item C. Executive session presented to 25 up on the statute, section 3071, to discuss possible job performance of Tiffany Tillman Town Administrator. I will make a motion to convene an executive session.
I'll second that.
Roll call?
Bert?
Yes.
Cliff?
Yes.
Richard?
No.
Harold?
No.
David?
No.
Okay, motion has failed.
Here, and I can tell you that this is what, this is where I was at. I've once said before, you said all that. She came two months ago wanting the job description of her, you know, of her deal. And before me, before I even give her a raise or even discuss her deal, I think we need to...
And you don't think that needs to be done in the executive session?
That's not what's on that there. That's to discuss the raise, not her job title.
No, the...
It says to discuss job performance.
So that's not to change the deal in her books.
What?
That's not to change the deal that she sent us on her...
But you guys could, when you're talking about my job, let me just give you, because that is to, when you go into executive session, that is to discuss my performance. That's nothing to do with anything else but my performance. And that was where you can talk about what I'm doing, what I'm not doing, what I need to do, anything like that.
That's where I'm at with my deal, is, you know, how can I even discuss her performance if I don't know what her job title actually is?
Because you can't discuss it out here in public.
But I can read it in these papers, so I know what I'm gonna go back there and discuss.
I give up.
I do, too.
It, that makes no sense to me whatsoever. Item D is discussion with possible, well, we won't be doing that. Item E, discussion with possible action to approve new police department policy and procedures. Aaron?
Thanks, Ryan.
Thank you.
Everybody knows my number up here. Bert knows how to get a call me, if anybody has... 911. That's correct. But on, but on another note, you can always get a hold of me through a different level. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think I emailed everybody the draft of the new policy and procedure book. We had to update this since 2010. And Hank had, had been working on it, but I went through for the last three or four months and tried to get it done and adjust as much as possible to things more currently, because back then we're using body cams and all that stuff, so I tried to just update it as much as possible and take out some stuff that didn't, that would contradict the town's policy and procedure book.
Hey, I believe this or not, I read, I went through like 99% of that document. It was, it was quite the challenge.
I printed it about 20 times, so if I miss something...
I understand. But the version that you sent out, I was finding, it was, I thought that it was your last draft, is what I thought it was, because there was some stuff in there with enumerations that were left blank. Does that make sense?
Why's that not accepted?
It wasn't a perfect document, and I don't expect it to be perfect. But there was enough of that throughout the entire document on that version that you sent me that I considered that a final draft, and to be honest with you, until it's more closer to being complete, I would really hate to vote on this thing.
It might have been the format it was sent, because there was nothing but, you're talking about blank letters and stuff?
I'm talking about, you know, calling out, making a statement, and then under that statement, you would have item A, B, C, D. I'm not saying you. I'm saying whoever the authors were at the time.
Yeah, it's the system.
And A might be filled out, and then B, C, and D would be blank. I found several of those.
It might have been how it was sent.
I don't know.
Because I printed it off, and I looked through all of it. I just didn't want to print it off for all of you.
I'm not complaining. I'm just telling you that I haven't seen it in final, in my opinion.
Okay.
That's my opinion.
We'll print it out and give it to you guys.
Okay.
Well...
I was trying to get that done, because there's a lot of stuff...
Because it's like, what, 500 pages?
It's 370 or something.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, wait, how?
I don't think you need to print it off for everybody, but we could pass it around. You want a copy and pass it around? What do you think about that? I think it's a very good product. Let me close with that. I looked at it, and looked at it, and looked at it. I think it's a very good product. Just, it's just, it needs just a little more touch...
It's probably the format it was sent in, because anytime you take something off of it, if I go take something off, it should take it out of the, out of that completely. So, I found that myself, and I went back and looked through it. It would still leave something there, but when I printed it off, it looked fine. So I don't...
Okay.
I just, instead of printing it off for you guys, if I looked at it, I just emailed it to you and stuff.
I understand. If you want me to look at the hard copy, I can do it in his office, or I can borrow his copy and take it home, or whatever. I don't think you need to print another one out unless you just want to, or some of these guys want it.
Okay, we will table that. Item F. Discussion with possible action to accept proposal from American Legal Publishing for ordinance codification. Tiffany, how often do we have to recodify our city ordinances?
You should do it at least every 10 years, and it's been 16. How long, I'm sorry? 16. We used Sterling codifiers in the past, and they were working on it, but then they have also, I mean, they were working on it before. But then they were bought out by American Legal, and so it's gonna start all over. They would also, once they got them ready for you guys' approval, once they were approved by the board, then they would be actually put online instead of just on paper, which will be nice.
For a fee of $12,400? And then $500 a year for them?
Yeah, that's so that they can maintain it online. So anytime, their, their system is anytime you guys pass an ordinance, then it would go to them, and then they would automatically update the online version, too. It'll be much more user-friendly than every 10 years taking all the stuff that you guys have approved and sending it to them, and then redoing it back. They will keep it updated yearly.
And that would save us the $12,000 that we're gonna have to spend now
Yes.
to get it all up to date. I think this is a really good idea. I mean, you know, because...
That's who's done our current one.
Yeah.
Correct.
No, it's different people. They bought out Sterling.
But, yeah.
These people had their own business, and then Sterling had their business, and so they...
They merged, or...
Yes.
How do we pay for this? Is it incremental, annual? How do we?
Well, we will pay them $12,000 once, you know, we'll pay them so much, and then pay them $12,000 when they give us a finished product.
Correct.
And then we will pay them $500 a year to maintain them.
Oh, okay. That's not as much as I was expecting. $12,000 to get them done, $500 a year to make corrections, or...
It's $12,400 for the co-funds fee, and then the first year will be $550, and then after that, it'll be $500.
Is that in here?
Someone's lost page. Page 19.
How did I miss that? Oh, I saw computer screen 30.
Page 19.
I'll get it.
What does it say? You don't have numbers?
Arm.
Yes.
And you're recommending this? And you're recommending this?
Should help me sit to me more of it. This is required by law for your due too, isn't it?
Yes.
I make a motion to accept American Legal Publishing Ordinance Code proposal of fee of $12,400 with this online code setup of 550 one-time fee, and then yearly after that is 500.
Second. Roll call.
Cliff?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Okay, item G is discussion with possible action to apply for the MRDAF grant.
So I forwarded the, this is the.
It's your, is it the municipal roads drilling activities?
Yes.
Fund?
Fund grant, yes. So, we can apply up to $700,000 for this, it's a 75-25 match. I went ahead when I got this because everybody's been talking about Mitchell Road and been talking about Cemetery Road. So I sent that to our engineer to work up for the grant. And he come up with, I mean, it's gonna have to be done like in six phases for that grant. Hopefully, the grant stays around, because they are, I know the municipal, the drilling people are having to pay for this. But in six phases, because the total project costs is around $3.5 million. Right now, I sent an email or in my, not in my, my report. We do have allocated street money. Right now, in our street improvements, we have 270, approximately $278,000. Of that, we have allocated for the CDVG grant, around 150, and then 99,000 for the Main Street project, for the Howden Street. So that only gives us about 30,000 for this project, we can use capital outlay general account, which has about $435,000 in it, 435,000, but it's totally up to you guys. I just, I know some of you want grants, 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 but sometimes we can over-grant ourselves too, so. I didn't know if you guys wanted to proceed with this.
Tiffany, when you say over-grant, is it having the money to do the Hennessy match part of the grant?
That and workload. I mean, right now, we've got a CDVG, we've got a REB, we've got the water treatment plant project, which is loan. We've got, I can't even think, I mean, there's several out there that we're dealing with right now. It's hard to keep track, sometimes.
That issue was brought up at the grant workshop, that you can get too successful and overload the system.
Okay, what's the pleasure of the board?
Well, I think I would want Tiffany's recommendation. Because you do have a lot on your plate.
You say that, Richard, can I ask why you voted no to go into executive session to talk about my job performance?
I don't want to talk about it right now, it's over.
So, I mean, I think the roads need to be done. It may be something that the town board, but if we do this, we're only gonna be like 2,000 feet at a time. So if we do this, it's something that the town board needs to be completely on board to keep going. And not just do.
By the time you got one part done, the other part you just did one out.
I mean, I mean, you can keep applying every year, but it's something that you're gonna have to keep on and keep on and not go, well, we've done half a mile, so now let's go, let's go work on something else, I mean, it's gonna be, I mean, and plus, I will tell you that the street fund only gets about $8,500 a year. Is that the year? Or, no, $8,500 a month, sorry. $8,500 a month is what the street gets.
$100,000 a year or less.
Yes, so in order to match this, which our matching is about $166,000, it's gonna take two years, in which that may be how long, but every two years, we would have to be totally focused on finishing this.
Okay, we ready to move on? Any other discussion?
This is a federal grant, I take it, or state?
It's state, I'm pretty sure it's state. It's a state, I'm pretty sure it's state.
Is the 700,000 per year, or is that, you said the 700,000, so each year you'd have to keep reapplying till we got to the 3.5 million? And by then, it'd be $5 million, probably.
Possibly, the way things are going.
Okay, item seven, new business. Any? Citizen comments?
So, did you all not agree to do that? To apply for the grant, did I miss something?
We didn't.
Okay, alrighty. So you're not doing anything about our streets, okay. Just off the gas.
All right, councilperson reports, Richard?
I won't be able to make the planning session in January.
You won't?
I won't be able to make it.
What? I couldn't hear what he was saying.
He won't be able to make the planning.
The big planning meeting that we have every year.
Oh, he won't be here, oh, okay. Oh, and you're the guy who started it.
I, I think when we vote on our monthly meetings for the year, that we also plug in the planning committee in advance, a year in advance, like.
I think we did, wasn't it, it had been set.
It's been set for a long time, I think.
It's been set for.
January 21st.
A year, hasn't it?
It's not a year, but I know I put it out back in September.
September. Well, my, my mistake then. But I won't be there.
Cliff? I just wanted to ask Aaron how he likes the digital tickets.
It's working great, there's some kinks, there were some kinks in it at first, I mean, we had to just user error stuff in the beginning. It's been a learning experience, both Shelley and I, but we got, I think we got it figured out for the most part now. I mean, just like anything that's new to you, you're gonna, it's gonna be a learning experience, so I think we're past that for the most part. I mean, like, overall, things go great.
Thank you. David? Got anything?
Yeah, this is a dumb question for Aaron again. Aaron, I'm looking at your report, we did a, we did a, and I'm not saying this is wrong or right or whatever. We did 139 traffic stops with only 39 citations written. Help me understand that, is that you guys are just giving verbal warnings to people or?
Verbal or written?
Okay, all right.
They have to have so many contacts, but you can't tell an officer to write tickets or anything like that.
Yeah, I absolutely was not trying to do that. I just, I just, I need to understand the numbers that you're showing me. That's the only question I had on that, Bert?
I did too, I specifically.
Thanks, Aaron.
I would, I would like to take this opportunity to say something about what happened back up the agenda on Tiffany's position. I asked for this to be put on the agenda. This board has voted to give our employees percentage raises for, I'm not sure how long, Tiffany, you may have to help me out. Tiffany has not participated in those raises, she's not had a raise in six years?
14.
14 years.
No, since 2014.
Oh, since 2014, okay, well, that's close. So, I, I just want the public to understand, that was my reasoning for putting this on there. Personnel issues have to be discussed in executive session. I feel this shows a willingness of, or a lack of willingness for some board members to work with Tiffany. I do not think this is fair, and I fear that our town is headed in a bad direction. She has not given herself a raise because she was waiting on the board to do it. My mistake, I did not realize that she was not including herself when we gave her blanket raise.
And I don't want a raise. I want to know, I felt like it was, it was an opportunity to go into executive session and talk with you guys about my performance. And so with you guys unwillingness to go and to talk to me, to me, I feel like there is nothing I can do. So, because I've asked, and I've asked, and I've asked, so I'll just leave it there.
Anything else? I move adjourned.
I second that.
Roll call.
Bert?
Yes.
Cliff?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Okay, this will be a meeting of the Hennessy Utility Authority, December 8, 2022, roll call.
Richard?
Here.
Cliff?
Here.
Bert?
Here.
Harold?
Here.
David?
Here.
Consider approval consent agenda, minutes of meeting. Approval of claims as follows, November purchase orders, 35,58103. December purchase orders, 66,30932. December meter deposit refund zero, and treasuries report. Any corrections or additions to the consent agenda? If not, I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda. I'll second that. Roll call.
Do a second pass?
I did.
Cliff?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Citizens comments? Other scheduled business?
I too am disappointed in the board tonight.
Okay. Discuss, accept, approve, deny, reject, and/or take action on the following. Item A is discussion with possible action to approve purchase of a new pump for one of the high-service pumps of the water plant. Tiffany, you want to explain that to?
Actually, oh my goodness, it's like I have a bunch of air. We're actually not gonna take any action on this tonight. I may have to ask for a special meeting. We're trying to locate a, I've got a bunch of air. We got to locate, we're trying to locate the, what do you call it, the stainless steel propellers. And the pump company is looking all over. Just the propellers alone that he have found so far is $12,000, that's how much we paid for the complete rebuild last time. So.
So they're trying to find a better deal, basically?
Yes.
Prices have gone up, so we didn't realize.
And I will tell you that our stainless steel one that we put in last time, it has no wear on it, like, it is working wonderful. So we feel like we're really trying to find that, so.
Is this a plastic one that's getting replaced?
Yeah, and we replaced it two years ago.
Has it already been two years, wow? I know we talked about it, because didn't the electrician, Caleb do it? Do a rebuild?
No, he didn't do the rebuild.
He didn't do the rebuild? Okay. Okay. Okay, so we will table that pending possibly a special meeting, okay? New business? Citizens comments, anybody? Councilperson report? Richard? Cliff? I'm also disappointed as, I mean, I don't know. David?
Nothing.
Harold? I think I've already spoken my piece, motion to adjourn. Roll call.
Cliff?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Richard? Bert?
Yes.
David?
Yes.